KPTS, Channel 8. Production and broadcast costs for Sedgwick County Commission meetings have been underwritten by Sedgwick County. KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the county commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS, 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas, 67203.
Good morning, I'm Kristi Zuccovich. Welcome to the January 13th Sedgwick County Commission meeting. We are glad you're joining us this morning, and of course, we use this time to let you know about activities going on around Sedgwick County. And commissioners, we would remind you that it is a wonderful day out in Sedgwick County today, and it will be a great day to head out to the zoo. It is $2.50 admission for Winter Wednesdays, and of course, Winter Wednesdays continue through February. We'd also remind you at the Interest Bank Arena, we do have a number of activities, including Monster Jam, that will be held the 15th and the 16th, and Thunder Hockey will be in action on the 22nd, 23rd, and 27th. And if anyone still has a live Christmas tree around, we do have locations open until January 24th for you to drop those off and to pick up free mulch, and those locations are listed on our website at sedgewickcounty.org. On today's agenda, we do have a short but important meeting. We do have the presentation of the 2015 Chairman's Award. We also have the selection of the 2016 Chairman and Chair Pro Tem. I have no quiz to end out your year, Mr. Chairman. I just say, yay, you did it.
Let's get started. I've been waiting for this day for a year.
I know, at least you've been counting since December, so... Chairman Ransow, would you please open your last meeting?
Absolutely, thank you. With that, we'll call it over to the regular meeting of the Board of Sedgwick County Commission for January 13, 2016. Madam Clerk, first item?
invocation to be led by Rabbi Gilboa of Al Ba'ahim Hebrew Congregation. Please remain standing for the flag salute ceremony.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rabbi Michael Gilboa, from Hebrew Congregation on Woodlawn Avenue. Those who wish, please join me in prayer. Rebbono sholam, Creator of the entire world, please bless this holy gathering, bless this assemblage. We recall the words of our prophet Jeremiah, who told us, "To seek the welfare of the city and the county in which we live." And we are mindful of the great blessing of self-government, and the blessing of citizens to have the opportunity to come together, to speak their mind, and to make decisions about how they will live their lives. And we ask that you open the eyes of everyone here to see the greater good, and to see the possibility of lifting up every spark of the divine in this city and in this county. Baruch atah donai ha'tov ha'metiv. Blessed are you, our God, who is good and who creates good. And we say amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rabbi, for being here today. Next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Enruh.
Present.
Commissioner Norton.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Peter John.
Present.
Chairman Ransow.
Present. Commissioners, before we proceed, I'd like to say a little bit here, I'd like to share our condolences on the death of our friend and colleague and fellow elected official, Sedgwick County Register of Deeds Bill Meek. He died on Sunday morning, January 10th, at the age of 71. Bill was appointed in April 1998 to fill a term for Register of Deeds, and began his first elected term in January 1999. Prior to his election, Bill had worked at Sedgwick County in code enforcement for six years, first as a building inspector, then as a combination inspector. He had nearly a quarter or a century of county knowledge and experience. Bill brought the highest professionalism to the Register of Deeds office, and implemented technology enhancements that resulted in greater efficiency and transparency during his term of service. His Deputy Register of Deeds, Tanya Buckenhams, said Bill loved being a part of the Sedgwick County organization, and encouraged employees to provide the best, to provide the highest customer service. He was well-respected by his employees, and his leadership, knowledge, and experience will be missed by many, both in our county and across the state. In addition to his local elected position, he served as President of the State Register of Deeds Association. He also served as the Legislative Chair for the Association, often testifying on behalf of the County Register of Deeds from all across the state. Bill is survived by his wife Judy, and will miss him greatly. I considered him a wonderful friend, and I know he's seen a better place, but we all will, we all will miss him deeply, so... Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, obviously, in total agreement with your remarks, would add that, you know, Bill went out of his way to try and improve service, not only for what he had to do, but he was also, I think, vividly provided a service in terms of making it easier on folks who wanted to either get a passport or get a passport renewed, could do it through the Register of Deeds office when that was part of their function, and was very proactive in trying to work, and was a team player, in my view, when challenges came up that involved not only his office, but some of the other offices that the Register of Deeds has to work with under Kansas law. He will be missed tremendously. I consider him a dear, dear friend, and my condolences go out to Judy and the rest of Bill's family.
And I'll also say there will be a celebration of life this Saturday at 10:00 at Pathway Church. Commissioner Enruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to say a comment or two about Bill, and I appreciate the remarks that have already been made, but beyond his ability as a great Register of Deeds, and his service to the citizens of Sedgwick County, he was a good friend to me. He tried to help me when I first came on as a county commissioner, and helped me become accustomed to what it means to serve in local government. And he was always a guy of good humor, and just enjoyed being around him. He often had a humorous quip that we all enjoyed, and as has been said, he was a good public servant, a good friend, and he will be missed. That's all I have.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, it's interesting that his last name was Meek. As I got to know Bill, that is actually the character trait that I think he exemplified the most. He was a very meek and humble person. He was a servant leader. That's a description I think that I think we should also aspire to, but he actually did it. As an elected official, it's easy to think you're really something, and to want people to, I guess, just understand that you're the authority, but Bill did not operate that way. He was a servant leader. He actually loved his staff, I'm sure of that, and his staff loved him. That's extremely unusual for an elected leader to take that kind of role. And so, he's an inspiration to me, is a mentor. I've really gotten to know him especially over this last year, and he's going to be sorely missed. I just wanted to share that, that he is a godly, faithful servant leader, and truly a great friend that we all enjoyed here, so that's it.
Commissioner Norton?
If you knew Bill very well, you knew he wasn't very tall. And he was so self-deprecating about, you know, living through that, and joking about how, you know, how short he was, and that often came up in staff meetings and other things. But the one thing I remember is that no one around here will be of taller stature than Bill Meek. He was a man of honor and honesty. He worked hard at his craft. He and I had a very special relationship. We ran our first campaigns together, and I've always been known for throwing a lot of candy at parades. And Bill, our joke became, he'd always line up behind me and say, "Boy, I hope you bought plenty of candy this year, because that saves me a lot of money." And if you knew Bill, he knew how to pinch a penny a little bit, so he'll be greatly missed around here at the courthouse, his smile, his self-deprecating humor, and his ability to get things done in a very conscientious way. So, Bill Meek, let the sun shine on your face, let you have laughter, and let you join all of us at some point in our lives again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, commissioners. Madam Clerk, next item?
Public agenda.
Public agenda. We do have somebody signed up this week to speak?
Lonnie Wright, 1721 South Lulu, Wichita. I appreciate the remarks about Bill. Bill was a plumber, and he became our county plumbing inspector in a previous life, so we've always kind of been proud of that. And, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for the things you've done this past year that I have liked, you know? This asking for...
Is this a short list?
I really appreciate you inviting the audience to speak on different agenda items. It has resulted in some long meetings sometimes, but I enjoy that. And then this newer policy where somebody doesn't even have to sign up in advance, and not restricted just to the agenda item. You know, a person can show up and may be able to speak on anything. So, I appreciate the way you've involved us more, and certainly has not been boring. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Lonnie. This is something we've been working on for a while, and I think it's fitting, the first time somebody took advantage of this new policy for it to be Lonnie Wright, so...
Well, thank you.
Thank you for your participation, and I appreciate the kind words.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes. Item A, Regular Meeting Minutes of December 2nd, 2015.
Mr. Chairman, if this would be in order, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the regular meeting minutes of December 2nd, December 9th, and December 16th, 2015.
Second. We have a motion and second. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransow.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business. Item D, Presentation of the 2015 Chairman's Award.
All right, commissioners, I want to talk a little bit about the Chairman's Award first. Each year since 1998, the Chairman of this Board elects one organization, project, or person that has exhibited a high level of dedication to public service, or otherwise made strides in improving our community. Some past recipients of this award include the Patriot Guard, the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Office Community Policing Unit, and the Wichita Business Association. I am pleased to be able to present the 2015 Chairman's Award to an individual that I believe is making a significant difference for the youth of our community. I have chosen Bishop Wade Moore Jr., founder of the Urban Prepatory Academy, for the 2015 Sedgwick County Chairman Award. Commissioners, I have a short video that I've asked staff to put together to highlight Bishop Moore and his positive efforts.
Bishop Wade Moore Jr. I was born in Arkansas, and joined the military coming out of high school, spent nine years in the U.S. Army, was a youth pastor at a church for a number of years, always worked with children and youth. And after I started our own church, own ministry, continued to work with children and youth, and always had a desire to start a private school. And here we are at Urban Prep Academy. Urban Prepatory Academy is a private kindergarten through 6th grade school located in the heart of northeast Wichita. We started the 2014-15 school year with 13 students. We tripled that attendance this year to 39 students.
Hi, my name is Brenda McDonald, and I teach 3rd and 4th grade. I was looking for a school that was doing something different than what's currently being done in the public schools, and so, when I heard about this, I got really excited about a school that was really focused on helping students and meeting them where they are, and providing resources to help students grow.
The importance of a school like this is that now parents who have children in school have a choice on where they want their children to attend school. And not only is it just another private school here, this school has become the hub of this community, to where we have community groups and organizations that use this facility. We lease property out to rooms where they hold an event, and that helps us build our scholarship fund to help low-income and working-class families be able to maintain their tuition.
The program has meant a great deal to my family. It has allowed for them to accelerate in their learning abilities at their own level, at their own pace, and also, it's offered them the opportunity to be able to get the one-on-one attention that they would not receive in a classroom that is 20 capacity or more.
My favorite thing about coming to school here is because of the teachers, the volunteers, and some of the peers.
My favorite thing about coming to school here is the better education.
I've seen a lot of successes, mainly the boost in confidence, students acquiring the skills they need to read and do math, and just the general glow that they get when they're realizing, like, hey, I can do this.
We got in a 3rd grade student who was not able to read in the 3rd grade. One of the things that I did in starting the school was hire a reading specialist, knowing how important reading was. She worked with that child daily, and teaching her reading tutored her over the summer, and within a few weeks, had that child reading on grade level.
Pastor Moore has been a trailblazer for the community, but for the whole Wichita. He is the type of person that, if you have a dream, if you have a goal, and you're willing to do the hard work, he's willing to be there right with you. And that's so important for our children.
We're going to continue to grow the school. We're kindergarten through 6th grade right now, and our goal in what we're doing is growing at one grade every year to grade 12. And we're about five years away from our first graduating class at Urban Prep Academy.
Pastor Moore is the most awesomeest pastor that I can think of.
He really loves us, and he puts a lot into this school to make sure that we get a good education and get what we need.
Bishop Moore, I want to congratulate you, and thank you for all the work that you've put into the community. I know you'll continue to do great things. Your school has increased 300% from the first to the second year, and I'm sure you'll continue to have tremendous success in the future. I'm honored, on behalf of the Sedgwick County Commissioners, to present you with the 2015 Chairman's Award. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you first to Commissioner Ransow, and the entire Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for this outstanding award. I believe that service is something that we owe to each other as human beings, and especially to our children, that we have this obligation to teach them, train them, lead them, show them that they can be successful, no matter where they're coming from. And that's our goal at Urban Prep, is to continue to educate children. It's not the easiest job, especially with the way education has gone, and how children have just been pushed through the system, especially with a school like ours, it's not an easy thing. So, we have to have a good staff of people that are willing to sacrifice and do the hard work, and I really appreciate our team that makes all of this possible, and thank you, thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to say, I got to hear Pastor Moore last Friday give a more thorough explanation of his passion for this school. I'm just extremely impressed. He stands out to me as someone who has a vision for better education. He really, truly loves education and loves these kids, and he has sacrificed a tremendous amount to get to this point, and I know he's going to, he plans on being successful, he's got a vision for graduation of these students, and he doesn't let barriers get in the way. So, I just want to say thank you for what you're doing for this community. I'm extremely impressed, and I hope your tribe increases. I just love the people, that they have a passion for education the way that you do. Please keep it up, of what you do. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Peter John?
Thank you. I just second the comments of the Chairman and Commissioner Howell. Leadership is often by being upfront and doing some challenges that other folks might not see as even possible, and folks go out there and make it happen, and I'm delighted to see this award provided today, and wanted to thank publicly Bishop Moore. I enjoyed his comments last Friday, too. Thank you.
Thank you. And in closing, I'll say, you know, you're doing tremendous work, and there's a lot of people that complain about problems going on out there, but you're a shining example of someone who's not just going to complain about something, but you're going to get things done. You're making a difference in the community that will last for generations to come, and words really can't express how thankful we are for everything that you and your staff does. And please let everyone there, the staff, the parents, the kids, know, understand how proud we are, and that we're behind you, we support you 100%, so thanks again, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next item?
Item E, Reported the Board of Bids and Contracts Special Meeting on January 7th, 2016.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on January 7th resulted in one item that we're bringing to you this morning. That item is the 457 Deferred Compensation Plan for Human Resources. Recommendation is to accept the best proposal from Great West Life and Annuity Insurance Company, and execute a five-year contract. I'd like to point out an adjustment that was made in the minutes. Received a phone call this morning from our consultant, Highest Group. The current plan was originally reported as $364,556.53 as an annual payment, or 89 basis points, and that should have been $280,890.74, or 68 basis points. There was a duplication in the record-keeping revenue, which represents 21 basis points. So, long story short, on the savings between the new proposed plan versus the current plan, instead of a 44% savings, it's actually a 27% savings. This does not change, however, the numbers that are found in the table, nor our recommendation, but we wanted to point out that adjustment in the minutes. On behalf of the answer any questions, we also have a representative from the consultant, as well as Great West, to answer any questions you may have.
Anyone from the public like to speak on this item? Seeing none. Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransow.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item F, Reported the Board of Bids and Contracts Special Meeting on January 8th, 2016.
Joe Thomas, again, purchasing director. And this special meeting of the Boards of Bid and, excuse me, Board of Bids and Contracts of January 8th has two items. The first item is Bridge Improvements on MacArthur between 247th and 263rd Street West. The recommendation is to accept the bid from Wildcat Construction Company Incorporated and subsidiaries in the amount of $417,304. And item number two is Bridge Improvements on MacArthur between Hydraulic and K-15, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid from Bridges Incorporated in the amount On behalf of the answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval of these two items.
Commissioners, what's the will of the board?
I move we approve the recommendation of the Board of Bids and Contracts.
Second.
Is there anyone from the public like to speak on this issue? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransow.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Next item, please.
Mr. Chairman, County Manager Mike Scholes, I recommend you approve the consent agenda items called through Kilo.
Does anyone from the public like to speak on these items? It's your last chance, Lonnie. All right. Seeing none. Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Mr. Chairman, I'd move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, call the vote.
Commissioner Enruh.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Chairman Ransow.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business. Item L, Selection of One Member of the Board of County Commissioners to Service Chairman through January 11, 2017.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we get involved in that specific item, I think we're at a point at the meeting where there aren't a lot of responsibilities that the Chair Pro Tem has to do as part of this position during the course of a year, but one of them is the presentation to the outgoing Chairman of a plaque in recognition of his service as Chairman of the County Commission. And I've had the privilege now of serving with Richard since he joined the Commission in 2011. It's been a challenging year. I think we're doing some good things for the citizens of Sedgwick County, and laying the groundwork for a better future, and so it is my honor and privilege to be able to present to you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to stand up to do this, in recognition of your service, your Chairman's plaque for 2015. Congratulations. Enjoy.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Well, it has been a good, interesting, and challenging year. I want to take a few moments to say a few things, and thank some people, and kind of maybe review this past year. First of all, I have to thank my family for their patience and support throughout this. Certainly, you know, being Chairman, being on the Commission in general can take some time away from your family, and they're very understanding, supportive of that, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank the employees and the staff of Sedgwick County, who do tremendous work every day of the year, and we appreciate all the work that they're doing. I do, however, want to thank one person in particular, and that's Assistant County Manager Ron Holt. This last year, we've gone through a lot of changes. For me, it seems like it's been the busiest time we've had as a Commissioner, simply because of some of the personnel changes. Very, very important changes. As you know, County Manager Bill Buchanan retired after 24 years. We also had County Council Rich Youson, who retired, and then MAPD Director John Slegel retired as well. And those are three important positions that we had to fill simultaneously as we were going through the budget process, and when Bill left, we had to finish... And when Bill left, we had to finish the budget process, and Ron filled in during that transition time when we went through the budget process. We were doing all these searches simultaneously and having all these meetings, and then when Mike came onboard, he's assisted in that transition as well and has done a tremendous job. And without his hard work and effort, well, it just wouldn't have been possible. So I want him to know just how thankful we are for his efforts. And then lastly, I also want to thank the taxpayers of Sedgwick County, because they are the ones that pay the taxes to provide the services that we provide and do the things that we do. And it's been a busy year. I want to talk about some of the things that we've done. I think we've made some significant positive changes here at Sedgwick County, and I think Sedgwick County was already a shining example of the right way to do things in local government, but I think we continue to improve and get better and to move the county forward and improve our financial position as we move forward. You know, there's been a lot of discussion about the budgets, and that's a big part of what we do here. And our discussions actually began with a February, with a retreat back in February where we introduced our goals, and these goals will carry through the 2016 budget process and are helping to put the county on a stronger financial footing for our future. Some of the highlights of what we've done include the tag office. We did approve a new tag office, which the county treasurer has wanted for years and years and years, so we're finally moving forward on that. We've also made a decision on the 271 building, which will find space for the MABCD and MAPD space, something they've been wanting for a long time. Sedgwick County has also taken the lead and cooperated with the city of Wichita on an RFP for the law enforcement training center, and so we'll continue down that process, and we will also get that need met, something that's been ongoing for a long time as well. We sold some land, Northeast Park, that got back on the rolls and brought in some new revenue. We've also been allowing concealed carry in Sedgwick County buildings, which is, we've taken a leadership role on that, and I think that's turned out very well, and I think both our citizens and our employees appreciate that. We've also done some things as a result of employee suggestions. We moved environmental resources into the Public Works Building. We reopened the bait shop out at the Lake Afton. Both of these measures will save taxpayer dollars, and these came as a result of suggestions from employees. And while it took longer than what I would have liked to get those moves done, I would encourage our new manager to keep an open ear to employees out there, because they often have good ideas and know good ways to save money and improve our services out there, and I hope as we go forward, we'll continue to do that. We also provided new funding for new AMS stations to support expanded Wesley Medical Center facility in Derby. We also bought land for another AMS station that will be built as well. We reduced the solid waste fee by, I believe, 22% because we'd reached the point that we didn't need any more money, or we had more than what we needed. We maintain our mill levy rate and reduce our dependence on bonding for roads and bridges, which in the long run will actually give us more money to provide services and help dig us out of the hole that we have created from repetitive and unnecessary borrowing. Additionally, we have created the Jedredale Boys Ranch Correctional Alternative Program as well as the Family Engagement Component that's being implemented into all juvenile programs as part of prevention to provide family support mechanisms and practices and help reduce recidivism. We opened the Community Crisis Center on 635 North Main. This is an expanded crisis program that Calm Care and other community partners with our 23-hour observation chairs, sobering beds, and social detox services. This program allows for appropriate crisis response rather than the jail or emergency rooms, and it provides for greater community capacity and better utilization of resources. We've also worked with the legislative legislature to support reducing regulatory burdens as well as a regulatory burden here in Sedgwick County that increase the cost and delay our public works projects. We'll continue to work on that as we move forward as well. A KDOT broke ground on the 235 and Kellogg Interchange Project, which Sedgwick County partnered with, partnered on with $11.6 million. And previously, Sedgwick County committed $10 million of county road funds to Tyler and May's interchange on Kellogg as well in the past, so we'll continue to do those sorts of things. So it's been, as we said, a very interesting and challenging year. The last several years with the new economy, we've had deficits every year that we've had to face and deal with, and I don't think that'll be any different going forward, but I think Sedgwick County remains committed to thoughtful, data-driven decisions that will enable us to provide our basic core services while maintaining and in many ways improving our long-term financial stability. Sedgwick County taxpayers can continue to have confidence in knowing this commission will continue to work for everyone, not just the local minority, but everyone, to ensure that their tax dollars are spent wisely and efficiently. And I'm very happy with the progress that we made. I'd hope to get a few things done, a few resolutions done that will give continued certainty to the taxpayers and help demonstrate where we're going in Sedgwick County. We're working on a few things that hopefully will come back to, that will come before the commission here in the following weeks. It could be a culmination of this year's work and effort. I want to thank my colleagues and staff for all the support and everything that we've accomplished. We've had a lot of debate about a lot of things, haven't always agreed, but that's okay. We live in a constitutional republic, and that's what it's all about. Now that being said, you know, we haven't been perfect. We've had our challenges. Perhaps one of the biggest challenges that we've had is getting our message out and getting the facts out so that the public understands what it is we're truly doing. Mr. Wright has said before, we've taken steps to allow public input. We like public input. We like public debate about issues. But it's important to have public debate about things that we're really doing and about the facts. We live in a day and age which media stories are often driven by emotion and conflict, and sometimes the facts and the truth are a casualty. And so we end up having discussions and debates about things that aren't really happening, and that's not helpful for the community. I think vigorous debate about issues and facts is important and good for our community. But when we debate things that aren't really happening, that's not helpful. So we, as a commission, have to get the facts, have to find a way to get the facts out better. Unfortunately, that's difficult because not, I know there's, if people aren't interested in getting the facts and telling the facts and telling the story correctly, then it makes it difficult. And I'll just throw out an example. There are some people who still believe and are still saying, even in the media, that we cut WIC benefits. That's factually incorrect. Not even close. In fact, we didn't cut anything out of WIC. Nevertheless, without going back along with the story, there were stories about our budget that we're doing this, we're doing that, that were just factually incorrect. And time and time again, when people would ask me questions and explain them the whole truth, they would say, oh, well, I didn't know that. That makes, that makes perfect sense. And I've had other commissioners that had the same story. So as we move forward, I want to continue to debate things and have an open discussion, but we've got to do a better job of ensuring that we have debates about the real issues and about the real facts and not debates that are centered on false or misleading information that people are putting out there just to promote their political agenda. That's not helpful for a community. And I remain committed to, as I said earlier, thoughtful and data-driven decisions. We'll continue to do that, and Mr. Manager, as we move forward, I know we've already had some discussion, we need to work on getting that information out there to all of our public so they can understand what we're doing, and I think that will make our community stronger and better, and we'll have more vigorous and meaningful debates about issues as we move forward. So with that being said, Commissioner Peter John?
Mr. Chairman, the item we have here is selecting one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as chairman from now through January 11th, 2017, and I'd like to make a nomination if that's in order at this time.
Yes, you may.
I would like to nominate a fellow commissioner who I've had the privilege of serving with, but I've known a lot longer than the time that he's been on the commission. And with the challenges we have going forward with the state level, I want to nominate our one commissioner who has legislative experience, and that's Jim Howell, and I think he would be an outstanding chairman for 2016.
Commissioner Norton?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Dave Unruh for chairman for 2016.
Okay. Commissioners, are there any other comments or nominations? Seeing none, I think what we'll do is we'll have a vote where each commissioner votes for, so they don't, we won't vote yes or no, and any particular one will vote for the person. We have two nominations, so we'll either vote for Howell or Unruh. That's okay. Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
I appreciate Commissioner Norton's friendship and confidence and support. Thank you very much, Commissioner Norton, but I will vote for Commissioner Howell.
Commissioner Norton.
Commissioner Unruh.
Commissioner Howell.
I just want to say thank you for the nomination to Commissioner Peter John. I appreciate his confidence in me, and I'm honored to be nominated. I would like to accept that idea and vote for myself as a commissioner, Jim Howell.
Commissioner Peter John?
We've got two folks who've been nominated. I consider both of them very capable of serving this position. In fact, all of us have served in this position with the exception of Commissioner Howell, but this morning I will be supporting Commissioner Howell. Thank you.
I agree completely with Commissioner Peter John, and I'll support Commissioner Howell. So by my total, Commissioner Howell would be the next chairman by a vote of four to one. Thank you. Congratulations.
Next item, please.
Item M, selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as Chair Pro Tem through January 11th, 2017.
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everyone up here, with the exception of two of us, have had the privilege of serving as Chair Pro Tem, and one can't serve as both Chair and Chair Pro Tem, so sorry, soon-to-be-Chair, I guess Chairman-elect Howell, but I'm going to nominate Commissioner Ranzau as Chair Pro Tem for 2016. I'm sorry. Did I say Ranzau?
I think you did. Ranzau for 2017?
For 2016.
2016.
2016. 17 will come soon enough.
Yeah. Commissioner Norton?
I'll nominate Commissioner Unruh for Chair Pro Tem for 2016.
Okay. Any other comments or nominations? We'll do the same voting process for this. Madam Clerk, call a vote, please.
Commissioner Unruh.
Once again, I want to thank Commissioner Norton for his confidence and support, but I'll support Commissioner Ranzau.
Commissioner Norton.
Commissioner Unruh.
Commissioner Howell.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Commissioner Peter John.
Commissioner Ranzau.
And Chairman Ranzau.
Well, this is a difficult vote for me, but since I've already got three votes, I think I want to be on the winning side of this one, so I'll vote for myself as well. And by my count, I guess that means I'll be the Pro Tem by a vote of four to one. Thank you. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
I don't believe we already had that. No one else has signed up, so next we have legislative issue, which we don't have anything. So we'll move to the other portion of the agenda. Commissioners, is there anything for the other portion? Mr. Peter John?
I'd be remiss if I didn't point out Sedgwick County contributed equipment that was allowed to use for some, I believe, creating mulch or disposing of, I'm not sure if it was just ordinary foliage or Christmas trees or out in Goddard yesterday, and wanted to point that out as well as obviously mentioned earlier about the winter weather. I'd also point out that January 13th is an important day in American history. 238 years ago, there was a sorely dark days during the American Revolution, and the British had captured Philadelphia, and they were residing in, in many cases, Patriots' homes and snug quarters inside the city while, at this time, on this date, the Patriot Army was trying to put together a hospital, makeshift hospital, for the soldiers who were literally in rags and in some cases, close to starvation outside at Valley Forge. If you ever get a chance, it's right outside Philadelphia, and it's a beautiful place now, but I'll tell you, during the winter of 1777 to 78, it was unimaginable suffering that was going on there. And I think that's important for us to remember as we proceed into 2016 with the challenges going forward. Also, on this date in 1794, interesting footnote in American history, not a footnote in an unusual sense, both Vermont and Kentucky entered the Union, and President Washington at that time in 1794 added two stars to the flag, which we continue to do. But interestingly enough, they had a procedure at that time. They thought, hey, let's add an extra, we add two more stripes to the flag, and we actually created a flag that had, instead of 13 stripes, instead of 13 red and white stripes, it had 15. And of course, that procedure stopped after a number of states. We'd have a very different-looking flag today if we'd continued that process up to the 50 states we have today. But January 13th is an important day in American history. I wanted to get that on the record this morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner? Seeing no one else for other, we don't have a fire agenda and no executive session. Now, we are scheduled to have a reception for the new chairman. At what time? 10:30. Okay. We'll be there or be square, right? Anything else, Mr. Manager?
That's it.
Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
All right.